Welcome to Neighborhood Board fourteen. Again, turn off all your cell phones and if you have to be recognized, especially in a WebEx, raise your right hand or left hand, I don't care, just a hand. And today's, tonight's meeting, it's going to be really ultra short. It's only going to be half an hour. Because at seven thirty, I understand that someone's going to shut off at seven thirty. What time, seven thirty, they're going to shut off electricity? So if we don't get to seven thirty and we're still going and it's shut off, that means automatically it's the, the meeting's adjourned unless there's enough. And I'm going to try and make sure that those of, of, in the audience will be able to give their reports. Yeah. It's cutting off, alright. Alright, let's get started real quick. Honolulu Fire Department? Before we do that, do we have a quorum? We do, alright, very good. Honolulu Fire Department, are you there?
Yes, I'm here, can you hear me?
Yeah. Oh, by the way, I want to give everybody two minutes. You're on, two minutes.
Alright, sounds good. Well, I'm Michael Fuji, I'm stationed at the Kualakini Fire Station, Station Four on the engine, and these are December two thousand twenty-three stats. So we've had four activated alarms, we had one hundred and twenty medical emergencies, two motor vehicle crash or collisions. And for our fire safety tip, it has to do with lithium ion batteries. So lithium ion batteries supply power to many kinds of devices, including smartphones, laptops, e-scooters and e-bikes, e-cigarettes, smoke alarms, toys, and even cars. If not used correctly or if damaged, these batteries can catch on fire and explode. So always follow the manufacturer's instructions, only use the battery and charging cord designed for the device, and replace cords that are damaged, frayed, or sticky to the touch. Charge devices in a cool area with good ventilation, do not keep charging the device or battery after it is fully charged. E-scooters and e-bikes should be, should only be charged outdoors, and smaller devices should be placed on a hard, non-flammable surface when charging, never under your pillow, on your bed, or on a couch. And store batteries away from anything that can catch fire. That's it for our stats and stuff, do you have any questions for me?
Thank you very much. Any earth-shaking questions? Yes, Vern?
Want to thank Kualakini Station for supporting the parade, every year people support the parade. Thank you to them.
Oh, you're welcome, we had a good time.
Thank you. Next, next time, we're going to, where, where will we be? In front of them or in back of them? In back, next time, can you make us in front of them? Because nobody could see us. Okay. Alright, thanks Vern. Any other, any other earth-shaking questions? Alright, thanks again. Any questions? Okay, thank you very much.
Alright, thank you.
And moving right along, we're going to have the Honolulu Police Department. Honolulu Police Department, go in once.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we are, we can hear you. Where are you? Up there? Yeah, okay, go ahead.
Alright, Happy New Year everyone. Lieutenant Kyony Hong from the Honolulu Police Department stationed out of Kalihii for the stats for December two thousand twenty-three. There are burglaries, we had two, motor vehicle thefts, sixteen, thefts eighteen, and car break-ins were five. Total calls for service for the month of December in this area was one thousand two hundred and twenty-six. One case of notoriety that happened in December, just go over it real quick, was on December night at about zero one fifty hours in the morning. Attempted murder first in the area of North School Street and Hoptailing. The synopsis is a possible game room in that area heard a knock at the door, male was outside wanting entry, his entry was denied. Before they could shut the door, he brandished a handgun and shot into the room, hitting two people. The suspect then fled the area, but a officer that was actively patrolling the area was flagged down by some of the witnesses. He was able to give chase to the suspect, and then other arriving officers helped make their rest. The suspect also abandoned the firearm prior to being arrested, which was recovered. The two individuals who were shot are expected to survive. The suspect was ultimately charged with a bail set at a hundred thousand dollars. But otherwise, any questions, I can address those.
Well, a real quick question, because the legislation that was introduced by, I think, Councilmember Tam, has the number of illegal game houses have, have been? Has it decreased? Is it under control?
I'm not sure. Yeah, I know our area does have some known game rooms, and they are actively working on trying to get in and shut them down. They do, you see it on the news every once in a while, but I'm not sure the exact number, if it increased or decreased as of the last check. But they are around, but we do also try to enforce and address it. If you are, I guess, living or working in an area that there are suspected game rooms, go ahead and call nine one one and report the address, and we'll forward it to the appropriate units in HPD to address them.
Okay, thanks, we'll, we'll stay tuned and see what happens. Go ahead.
Can you explain this always stop that's now being implemented?
Sorry, I am not familiar with, with that intersection or what intersection is that?
Okay, yeah, can you go, the next time, can you give us a definition on this always stop? Because I read in a paper and it doesn't make sense, so can you give me your version, the police department version? Thank you.
Next.
Yeah, I'll try to look it up, maybe if the chair can.
Yeah, next meeting, you, you got the question, you can answer next meeting.
Yeah, always stop, but can you give me like more of a, like, is there a specific intersection or something you're talking about, or is that general term?
Yeah, the always stop's supposed to be similar to the four-way stop, but there is a little difference. And I, some of my neighbors were asking, and they're not really clear on this always stop.
I kind of want to try to take care of it right now if we can, what, what is the discrepancy? Like, it sounds very self-explanatory to me, but always stop, everybody got to stop, and then, I don't know, is it a traffic light intersection? Can you give me a little?
Always stop is a four-way stop, you're saying that everybody stops, okay? Now. Does the, does the right side or the left side, who proceeds to cross that intersection?
Well, like any four-way stop, the person who gets there first stops, if another car gets there second, they stop, and the person who got there first proceeds if it's clear, then the next person gets to go, you know, I, I don't know, is it?
Okay.
In some way?
Well, the point is that we know the four-way stop signs, okay? So now you, all of a sudden, we get this new process. Now, what you just described to me, this is the old process, this is not a new process.
Yeah, who's telling you there's a new process, is my question, I guess?
Say again?
Who is telling you there's a new process?
It's in the paper, it was in a paper about, maybe about two or three weeks ago, they tried to explain it.
I, yeah, I don't know who, who is in the paper, like, is that just the media, or was it a representative from the police department, from the state?
It was in the Stop Bulletin advertiser.
Okay, sometimes, yeah, I'm not sure who's sending out the information, or I can look it up, but like I said, if, if you treat it like a four-way stop, if it's always stopped, there's four different areas that need to stop, and your question is who gets to go first? The person who normally gets there first stops, when it's clear, they go, the next person, the next person, yeah, it's, it's not too complicated, I hope, but maybe they explained it in a way that's complicated, I'm not sure.
Well, I'm not sure, because the point is, well, what you explained to me, we have a process already, now there's another process that comes up, and you're telling me that's the same process we have now, I mean, it doesn't make sense.
Yeah, like I said, I wasn't, I wasn't told there's a new process, and I think the old process is working just fine, like you said, and it, I don't think it needs to be changed, so to me, if you can get through the intersection safely, that's the main thing. If you see a stop sign in your area, stop at the stop line, make sure it's clear, and then proceed through the intersection.
So Lieutenant, what you're telling us is that the four-way stop is the same as the four-way stop that we've always had, correct?
Well, I, like I said, I wasn't informed of anything different on how to stop at stop signs, I'm just saying if it is a stop sign, you treat it like any other.
No, I think, I think we understand that, Don, correct me if I'm wrong, a four-way stop that we have now is the same as a four-way stop, it's that's been, I guess, advertised in the newspaper, right? It hasn't changed, right? That's what you're telling us, right?
Yeah, not that I know of, and then like.
That's fine, thank you, thank you, we got it.
Chair.
Yes.
Chair, I just looked at the newspaper article, I think because it's a three-way street, that they can't call it a four-way stop, so it's Prospect, Ala Paei, and Iolani, so they're calling it always stop. I think that's why they're using that terminology.
Carol, thank you very much for the clarification, and we move on, now we have a three-way stop and a four-way stop, and it hasn't changed, thank you. Thank you Lieutenant, we got to move on.
Yes, thanks.
Yes, Vern?
Fire for supporting the parade, that's all.
Oh, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else?
Question in regards to the gunman, did he have criminal records, convictions? Was he allowed to own a gun?
Definitely not allowed to own a gun, but I pulled up his record, appears he has zero convictions, yeah, zero prior convictions prior to this incident.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, let's move on, next, Border Water Supply.
Thank you.
Thank you very much Lieutenant. Border Water Supply? I guess Iris is not here, but Kathleen, are you going to take over? Yeah, sure. Thank you for coming.
I do not have the monthly report, because that wasn't what I was here for, but I was asked to give a quick update on Red Hill, as you've read the news, they've managed to get rid of all of the liquid fuel out of the tank, that was well over a hundred million gallons, so we're very grateful they did it very safely, and we're very pleased that the Navy was able to do that. Today I got a news release, they're going to start moving the sludge, the sixty-four thousand gallons that they could not drain by gravity, and that will be starting immediately, and they hope to have it done by the end of March. And then they will have some remaining left in there, and they will continue to work to get that out. We have a meeting with the admirals coming up, I believe, at the end of next week, and they are getting ready to transition from Admiral Wade, and Admiral Barnett will then take everything over, and Admiral Barnett, right now oversees Pearl, all of Pearl Harbor. So again, we keep an eye on it, but it's not over, we still need to do all the remediation to clean up the environment, and we've been working with the, the ledge, as you saw, that a bunch of us have signed the, an agreement that came out of the legislature, I see Rep. Takiuchi here, so thank you for that. And then the final thing was, somebody had asked about conservation, energy-efficient fixtures, page eleven in the little booklet they handed out, we have a website with all sorts of rebates and things like that, that you just go to, borderwatersupply.com, think back slash rebates, and we have clothes washer, toilets, et cetera, et cetera. And then the final thing, that Wes had asked me to come, if anyone had any follow-up questions on our rates, our rates will be going up on February first, so if you had any additional questions, I'm here to respond, thank you sir, thank you.
Any questions about the rate increase? You don't pay it, you don't get it. I think I asked the question, don't you have alternative, dig your own well?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Any questions? Questions for the public? Thank you very much for coming Kathleen, you too, thank you. Okay, moving right along, let's see, resident concerns, unless it's really pressing? If not, let's move on, I'm going to, unless there are any reports of members going to other meetings that concerns us?
Chair.
Yes?
I'll report next time, but I did go to both the Mayor Wright Housing and Ed Case's meeting, but I can talk about it next time.
Okay, well, thank you Carol, do let us know. Alright, moving right along, anybody would like to fill a vacancy? We have vacancies, I believe, in District, Sub-District Four and Five, anybody? Can all stand up at once? Okay, alright, moving right along, let's see, Ompa.
Okay, yes, I'm here, I'm here.
You want to give a report?
Real short, real, real short, okay, the Citizens Advisory Committee to Oahu Metropolitan Planning Organization, which is transportation planning for Oahu, met in December, December and January, January third, we re-elected our previous chair and removed some of the members who hadn't shown up for more than four meetings in the year, which is totally allowed, and they're given ample notice, and there's a, a public notice period now until January seventeenth on some of the projects that are coming up for the year. So if you, you want to go to the website of Oahu Metropolitan Organization, you can take a look at what it is, nothing really affects us directly in our neighborhood, but, you know, we, we do travel through some of these areas, like the Moanalua Highway, Ia Interchange, for example, that's one of the new projects put on the list. So, yep, that's it, if you have any questions, or, you know, if we have any concerns that haven't been addressed adequately through our process, I can try to bump it up, if it's transportation-related, at these meetings.
Okay, is there any questions for Cora? None, thank you very much Cora. Going down the line now in regards to our government agencies, our mayor's representative, and Ed, can you go cover all the ones that are under the new business and old business here real quick?
Okay, so unfortunately, I wasn't able to get responses to all of them, but I got a good number of, responses on a good number of them. First one on the agenda is the Mamalu Street speeding and parking violations. HPD report that in various times between November twenty-seventh to December fifth, Corporal Robert Del Rosario from HPD did check the area, during the checks, no speeding or parking violations were observed in any of those areas. If there's any, if you see anything in the future, encourage community members to call nine one one at the time violations are occurring, so the officer can make, can take immediate action. Next one I have is, next update I have is relative to eleven A on the agenda, which is the Alaneo Street crosswalk safety measures. So DTS went out there, did a field study, everything, the signage looks to be in good order, as well as the crosswalks and all the markings seem to be in good order, they also took a look at the traffic collision history over the past three years, no trends right now that necessitate the installation of traffic calming measures, like the speed pumps that were requested. There was a work order issued to DFM from, from Transportation Services in street pedestrian crossing, signed at the mid-block, mid-block crosswalk between Alaneo Street, between North School Street and North Kualakini Streets. For any, for further information regarding the completion of the work, contact DFM. Relative to the issue on eleven.
Wait, wait, sorry, go ahead.
I just wanted to thank DFM for the, for helping us out with Alaneo Street.
Appreciate it, I'll, I'll relay that message.
And, and DTS.
Okay, good, next.
Feral cats, there was a situation reported at the last meeting behind Meme Shopping Center. I did refer this one to Customer Services Division, and they were able to reach out to White Humane Society, White Humane Society did send someone out, the volunteer groups out, assess the situation, but they have a sparring leader services out there, that hopefully get that feral cat population under control. I did reach out to the person that raised that, she had given her email, and I hadn't heard back, but I, you know, when I initially made the, the referral to, over to Customer Services, you know, I did tell her, hey, you don't hear back in a week, give me a call, and she hasn't, so hoping no news is good news, and things are under control in that situation. But if there, I think, if there is more assistance needed, feel free to reach out.
What I'm going to do is I'll take it off the agenda, assuming that the city's taking care of it, and if she doesn't come back, that means I, unless she wants to put it back on the agenda, but thanks Ed, next?
Those are the, all the updates I received, I did not get a, I did not get a follow-up from the, on the concerns on ten H crosswalk at Ko'keia Street, we did request that it get restripped, as well as the four-way stop, right, ten K, four-way stop at Hala and Kapalama Street, did not get a response on those, we pushing those.
We'll keep it on the agenda, is that okay Don? We'll keep it on the agenda.
Last step, last, last update that I have, and I'll be quick, is the mayor's news letters online at oneohahu.org, you can go check that out, there's a pretty cool infographic on there that kind of shows the city services done over the past twelve months, year two thousand twenty-three, full stats, like a hundred one million gallons of wastewater gets treated every day at, by the Department of Environmental Services. But I do want to bring everybody's attention to the National Community Survey, it's online right now, you can find that survey at the Office of the City Auditor website, honolulu.gov/auditor. That's going to only be open from January eighth to January nineteenth, but that, that's a thirty-two, thirty-two question questionnaire survey that goes out, allows everybody in the public to participate in government and see what they want, and we take those results of the survey seriously at the city.
Great. Any questions for our city representative?
Chair.
Yep, Carol, yes.
Yeah, I just wanted to thank the Department of Transportation, I think it is, they painted the lines from school up, up on Hoptailing, there's lines again, thank you.
Don?
Okay. I want to know, and I asked, I went to the complaint department, I have a vacant lot above mine, seventeen thirty-one, they're using it as a dump site, it's a residential area, they, this is the second container they brought down, and I believe that's illegal. What they do is they have the so-called dump over there, and they come in and get household goods, they throw it inside a dumpster. So they're using that as a temporary dump site, and I believe in a residential area, and this is a vacant lot, I believe that's illegal, when I called, they told me no, and I want this thing to be clarified, because as far as I'm concerned, you can't do too much things in a residential area, not a dump site.
What's the address again, seventeen?
Seventeen thirty-one, just above my, I am seventeen.
Kapalama, Kapalama Street?
Yes, Kapalama Avenue.
I'll put that on the agenda. Anybody else?
Thank you.
Or, anybody else? Public? Any more questions for Ed? City rep? Good job. Thanks Ed. Okay, moving right along, let's see, we have somebody from Councilmember Santos Tam's office? I guess not, let's move on.
Counselman, I have a lot of requests. Remember the discussion we had, and some of the people saw that discussion on Othello about Judge Street sidewalk? Since the council would have, councilman have not put anything in his so-called letter, newsletter, or monthly to the report, I would like to have this go back to the unfinished business, to have this thing resolved, because the city says they will not do the sidewalk on Judge Street. Because of, I think it had three, one was, wasn't wide enough, and the other one, and I don't understand, historical data, and the other one was drainage.
Okay, I'll, I'll put that back on on the.
Yeah, because that's the one, in his August newsletter, he said he had, what, two-point three or two-point five million dollars for do the work?
Yeah, well, I'll put it back on. I'll put it on, well, let's see. You want to put it on the unfinished business? Okay. Okay, moving right along, we don't have, also remember Cham here? Ah, let's see. Senator Rhodes? Not here?
Yes, yes.
Yes, you are.
Chairman Fong? Yes, thank you. Chairman Fong, Liliha Neighborhood Board, on behalf of Senator Rhodes, I have some information for you.
So.
It's Paul Mendez, good evening.
Hi.
I'm going to be working with Senator Rhodes' office for the session.
Okay, you have any report?
Okay, yes, yes, thank you. Senator Rhodes wanted me to express that the opening day for the regular session of the legislature is going to begin, is going to begin on Wednesday, January seventeenth, it's going to be a low-key affair this year, an acknowledgement of the tragedy on Maui, but every, you're welcome to come down to watch the proceedings from the galleries, you're also more than welcome to come by his office, which is Room two-two-eight after the session, the actual session concedes or begins at ten o'clock, so, and then he wanted to remind everybody to stop by for some grinds and to say hello. Also, if anyone has any new bill ideas, please get them to his office as soon as possible, he'll try to do his best to get them in, but the filing deadline is fast approaching. And lastly, don't hesitate to call his office, whenever you're ready for the number, it is five eight six, six one three zero, for any questions or concerns, or he can be emailed at sen, S E N, Rhodes, at capital.hawaii.gov, pending any question, that's all I have for this evening.
Thank you, are you saying that actually the legislature's reinstating our, it's called Pa'ehana session and having food and drinks?
I, after the session for grinds and to say hi as, as well, so I'm going to, I'll make sure I hold them to that, and make sure that you, that he knows that you emphasize that as well.
Since I've asked Senator Rhodes, I'm sure that the other representatives will tell us if their, their office is open after the session for socialization and drinks and food, right? Okay, never mind, you don't have to answer that, thank you. Any questions?
Sir, you know, right now, the Capitol is going to have the so-called new security, now you're inviting us to go to the session, when we go to the session, what excuse do we put on the paper that we're doing business with the Capitol?
Yes, sir, so with the new security procedures, without an official badge, you will just have to show your ID, they have a metal detector, and they will look inside if you have a backpack or purse or any type of bag, and then if you go through the metal detector, they have one of those screening, a wand.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Okay, if not, let's move on, Representative Naguchi? Oh, I'm sorry, wait, sorry, I, protocol, is somebody from Senator Donna Kim's office here?
Yeah, hi, my name's Lindsay, I'm going to be her legislative aide for this session.
Hi.
Hi, nice to meet everyone. I just have a few things to go over from her community report, I was going to talk about the opening of the legislature, but we just went over that, so I'll keep it going. But you are also welcome to come see Senator Kim in Room two-eighteen after session is all Pa'eh. She is, Senator Kim also wanted to encourage you all to be involved in the lawmaking process, and details about how to attend hearings and provide testimonies are available in the community report. She asked that I provide an update on the feral chickens, the final report of the Feral Chicken Project Working Group recommends a partnership between the city and county and the state to further subsidize the costs, and also recommends a public education campaign to broaden the focus to assist with feral cats and birds along. to assist with feral cats and birds alongside chickens. Um, in today's hearing with the Department of Agriculture, Senator Kim followed up with the D O A to work on legislation to be introduced this upcoming session. Um, but contact, if you are experiencing issues with the feral chickens, contact information about who to talk to about that can be found in the community report. And then lastly, in the community report, we just have some community updates, um, with the Ready Kiki Backpack Initiative that Senator Kim participated in in December with, alongside Lieutenant Governor Luke at Ca- Kawai and Fern Elementary Schools, and they donated backpacks full of school supplies. Um, there's also some Kikioka Ina activities, um, at the Kikioka Ina in Kalihie coming up. Um, all these details about how to register and dates can be found in the community report. And Kupuna Days at Lana Kila Kitchen Cafeteria are back. Um, instead of just Tuesdays, they're doing every day, so Kupuna 65 and older can receive a free mini Lana Kila lunch special with a valid photo ID. Uh, any questions?
No, thank you. Just two, I have two items. First of all, I, since, uh, the Border Water Supply has already given us, uh, an update in regards to Red Hill, is there anything that Senator Kim would like to add to that? It's pretty much finished. I mean, they're, they've got rid of all, or took away all of the fuel. Is, is there anything else that she wanted to add? If not, I'm gonna take it off the agenda, that's why.
Um, everything that we have was already talked about, so I don't think she has anything else to say.
Okay, i- if Senator Kim wants to add on, just, uh, just call me or email me and I'll put it back on the agenda. I'm gonna take that off.
Question?
Yes.
Would Senator Kim pursue the D O D to have reimbursement? Or fund the well drillings and things like that, instead of us pursuing it via a lawsuit at the end? And they cough up their, some federal funds ahead of time, so we can lower some of our water rates?
Do you understand the question?
Yes.
Did you understand?
Yes.
Okay, we'll put that on. As a matter of fact, I think, um, Border Water Supply already answered that question. Uh, somebody else asked the question. And I think was asked that we're gonna pay for it now, but we're gonna get the money back, was just, time is of the essence, but I'll put it on the agenda. Sure. Okay. Uh, one more question too is, does, uh, Senator Kim have anything, uh, to say about the right turn on School Street and Leaky Leaky Highway? Carol, are you gonna take care of that report?
Well, I, I can just let you know, the D O, D O T was supposed to either come to this meeting or to the next meeting and report. Um, they, we did have the site visit with Neighborhood Board 16, and, uh, we walked around, they saw everything, and then they were going to report. We asked them a lot of questions, so they were supposed to come back with answers.
So it's still pending them. I'll leave it on the agenda. Okay, thank you. Any other questions for, uh, Senator Kim's representative? From the board? From the public? Not? Thank you. Okay. Representative?
Hi, everybody. Okay, really quickly, 'cause I know we're off on time. Um, sorry, still no date for this sweep at the Lilio Kalani Botanical Garden School Street Bridge Encampment. Um, I will be following up with D F M and D O T monthly until we kinda get that on the books, and we'll let you know as soon as possible. Very happy to hear the results of that Feral Chicken Working Group, 'cause I actually have a bill that's still alive in the second year of the biennium for a joint program between the Department of Agriculture and our counties. Um, that bill is HB 576. It's actually over in the Senate. We passed it out of the House last year. Maybe we can get that moving. Um, and as far as the Rosary Parakeets, um, I know Bay Sharon Matuda's not here, but that bill is also still alive. It kinda stalled in finance and we rolled it into the budget, but since that budget funding got cut last year, um, from the governor at the end, I will follow up on that bill to see if we can get that moving for additional funding to Invasive Species Council about Rosary Parakeets. Um, that second bill's number is HB 577. Um, speaking of that, um, I'll share, uh, I was gonna share some information on people who might not be familiar with the legislative process. The Public Access Room is continuing the trainings they do before every session, um, with, um, there, there's Zoom trainings online. There's a couple still coming up. Um, I think in the, as of some time, there, there's, there are over the next three weeks. You can go to lrb.hawaii.gov backslash par, um, and there's all the trainings online. You can just register on Zoom to sign up. Things on how to use the website, how to advocate, and understanding our calendar and deadlines if you're not familiar. Um, and yes, opening days, um, January 18th, I will be there also, and anyone who's there can feel free to stop by my office after, um, for some snacks, not sure we're having it. Maybe something from Lana Kila Pacific Kitchen, actually.
Uh, are you gonna have grinds too?
Um, I'm not sure.
You don't have to answer it. I just, I, I just echoing what it was said by Senator Rhodes' office. Never mind, if you are.
I'm happy to take any questions about anything.
Questions? Uh, I'm gonna leave Lilio Kalani Garden on the, on the table until we get that resolved, but thank you. Any other questions from the board? The public? Okay, if not, thank you very much, Representative. Representative John Mizuno, is, is Representative Mizuno still in office, or he's got a new position? No, he's, he's gone. Oh, so, so we're not gonna hear from him anyway, then, on this, I don't, who's taking his place? Do we know?
Uh, Chair, this is Cora.
Yes, Cora.
Okay, I think on Saturday, the, um, Democratic, uh, Party in that district, um, the, the District Council got together to, um, interview and vote on the candidates who applied for the position. And they, I don't know the decision, but they are, are sending three of the, you know, the top vote-getters in the council to the governor, and he'll make the decision on who to appoint to the position.
Okay, well, uh, I'm gonna take his name off and leave the.
I, I have a question.
Yes, go ahead.
On this thing with, uh, Representative, doesn't the public have an input on it? Because he represents the public. He does not represent, you know, John Mizuno. He represents the public. As far as I'm concerned, we, the public, should be concerned about who will be our representative.
Yep, this is, this is the process that has been established by the state, that it goes through the party, uh, for the, to get the three candidates, and then it goes to the, um, governor.
Well, the party said, what, what's been done before may not apply now, because now the laborable people are smarter now.
Let me, let me interrupt real quick. I don't.
This is a longer discussion.
I don't wanna, I don't wanna put Cora on the spot, but maybe, uh, our representative can explain why is it this way?
And where did he go?
Yeah, so, uh, Representative Mizuno is now the governor's coordinator on homelessness. Um, and the out, uh, this process that Cora was mentioning where the, well, 'cause Representative Mizuno was Democrat, the Democratic Party submits three names to the governor. That's actually in the Hawaii revised statutes, that this is the process that the party sends names to the governor for selection.
And does he live in our district? Because he represents our district. Does he represent Kalih Valley and Tam Heights?
Um, the party checks the names and addresses of the three, of all the people who wanna apply, and then after they make the selection, that goes to the governor, where I'm sure they also do vetting for that before they make their final selection.
So you're telling me that you're sure that that person is in our district, correct?
Um, yeah, the party was supposed to verify, the, the party verified the names and their addresses, that they were members of District 29 before they had the conversation.
It's by law.
Yep.
What, now, uh, Mr. Mizuno, now, not Representative, I believe he is the new?
Governor's coordinator on homelessness?
That's right. Okay, okay. Thank you very much. Thank you for the explanation.
No problem.
Okay, moving right along, let's see. Uh, District, uh, 28, Representative Holt, anybody from that office? Any representative from the governor's office?
Yes, aloha, Chairman Fong.
Hey, you're back. All right, Deli.
Happy New Year, everyone. I hope everyone is having a great start of 2024 and a wonderful holiday season. I'm gonna start off by announcing what has been done so far this year. Governor Josh Green signed the Ninth Emergency Proclamation on Wildfires to extend and facilitate the state's support for the recovery efforts for the people of Maui, which means that the government and nonprofit partners have launched the Maui interim housing plan. More information can be found at governor.hawaii.gov, which collectively commits 500 million to create a pool of more than 3,000 stable housing units with 18-month commitments. More details and update, and updates will be coming through along the legislative session as well. Another event that is happening this Friday, everyone is invited to attend the School Street groundbreaking ceremony that's happening at 10:00 in the morning. The program begins at 10:30. Governor Josh Green will be in attendance. Mayor Rick Blangiardi will also be in attendance. We also, we also reached out to other lawmakers in the area as well. And what we know so far to this exciting start is that Phase 1 is going to be beginning with 250 units. The whole project itself is broken down into three different phases, which we meet, which will be made up of three 15-story towers, totaling 797 affordable senior units, age 55 and up, targeting individuals and families earning between 30% and 60% of area median income. Housing is very fluid when it comes to the situation as far as the development time and how long things will take. So any updates that comes over to Hawaii Public Housing Authority, which I'm affiliated with, and also to the governor's office, I will keep you all posted. That completes my report.
So you're talking about the, uh, School Street, that, uh, affordable senior housing that's gonna go up near Lana Kila?
Yes, this is the groundbreaking ceremony that's happening this Friday at 10:00 AM.
This Friday or Saturday? Friday?
This Friday.
What time?
At 10:00.
Yeah, okay.
What is the expected completion date or anticipated?
As of now, it could take up to 10 years through all the different phases. But that can change depending on what happens and if there's more red tape that gets cut and if we're able to accelerate.
I'm sorry, Henry, you, you don't qualify. Okay, any other questions? Thank you very much for coming, Dallas.
Thank you, thank you all very much.
Thank you. Uh, anybody from Congressional District, uh, from Ed Case's office? Okay. Uh, maintenance of the planter strip and sidewalk area, did you cover that, uh, Ed? Oh, that's right, uh. I am gonna ask our illustrious representative to take care of that. Also, you can go back, go into the other three, uh, you know.
Uh, for the other monster home, no updates, kinda status quo?
Okay.
No work activity at, uh, 1532 Hanai Loop and 1604 Hanai Loop. 2037 Liliha Street, um, they submitted two new, uh, revision, revised permits for tho- that monster home. Uh, but we're kinda, it was done by a third-party review, and we are reviewing that review, uh, on the revised permits.
Again, my question is, they've been cited in a sense, no, they, they don't have to quit work. They can continue working. But if their appeal, I forgot which one has an appeal, if the appeal does not, is not granted, I mean, they lose on the appeal. Can the city go back and say, chop it all down?
They need to revise their building to meet the standard.
Thank you, that's.
They would probably have more substantial reu- renovation work to be done if they, because they're keep working on it, but that's their risk.
Okay, I, you know the reason I asked, you know, oh, look, look, we got this building, you can make us chop it down, you know? And the answer is yes, to conform to whatever is necessary, right?
Well, the, the, the words that you're using, Chair, uh, chop it down, can be interpreted a lot of ways, and, and, so we, we're gonna make sure that it meets the code.
Okay, let me rephrase it. You're gonna make sure if you, they lose their appeal, you're gonna ensure the city will.
We lose everybody? Or, or you're muted?
No, I think we lost everybody.
Lost connection.
Can everybody see that?
We can see, yep.
Okay, okay, that's okay. We'll go with it.
So I'm Jiro Sumada, Deputy Director for the Department of Planning and Reporting. So next slide, answer. So what I wanna go over, this is, uh, there's a lot of slides, I wanna, I wanna go over it as quick as I can, so you can save questions for, and, um, there's all kind of streets, uh, uh, on the island, so I'm just gonna overgeneralize the types of streets that we're talking about. Okay, so this is in an urban subdivision, uh, two, two lanes, uh, on-street parking. We call this, uh, like, a, a fully improved sidewalk, because there's curb gutter sidewalk, okay? So, um, this is a rolled curb. You see that white edge where the, the driver's, uh, the passenger side tire is on, that's the curb. Uh, and then the, the, that's also the gutter where the water flows, and then the sidewalk is the concrete walking path. And there's a planter strip in between, the green strip. So that was the area of concern, that planter strip. Who's responsible for that? Now, I wanna point out while we have this slide up, you see on the right side of that photograph? On the, on the, there's a sidewalk, and then there's this white wall about, looks like three foot high. Okay, that white, uh, looks like, uh, CMU block, that is a private property. And the, and the right at the front edge of that, that's probably the property line for that property. And the, what, what we call the back edge of the sidewalk, where people usually walk on, on the right side, all the way. Oh, yeah, thank you, Mr. Nita. All the way to the corresponding, on the left side, back of the sidewalk. That is what's called the city right-of-way. That is what the city owns. So the, what is private property is the grass lawn. It, go to the next, next, next one over, uh, no, up, 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 right, oh, right there, right there. So that's, that is private property line, and Mr. Nita, if you go back and point your, uh, the property line. Okay, so between the two pins that are being held up, that, that is what's, uh, called the city right-of-way. That is the, what the city owns and is responsible for as far as maintenance, and there's utilities on the ground and all that type of thing. Okay, so there's probably two lanes of traffic or on-street parking. Uh, in this situation, you probably have to, uh, yield to an oncoming car or whatever the case may be. But this is a urban subdivision, uh, kind of road configuration, okay? Uh, next slide. And that, this one is a, what, in a rural road situation, okay? It's, it's like, there's no center line on this roadway, but probably two cars can pass each other, right, safely, okay? Now, the city right-of-way, it's hard to tell on this where it is, but this is what we refer to as a grassed or unimproved shoulders. So the, the, between the asphalt, the asphalt is where the cars, uh, drive, and then the grass shoulders on both sides, right and left, is still the city right-of-way, okay? And then that grass area, uh, just like the others, the, the responsibility for maintenance is with the property only, property owner that the, uh, that grass shoulder runs. Okay, next slide. Now, in some subdivisions, they, you have this situation, which is considered an avenue, but it, it's like you have somewhat improved shoulders, like with this paved, uh, you see, you see that there's a double line, center line, the double yellow center line. Then there's a, on each side, there's a white edge, edge of pavement stripe, and then to the outs, further outside, there's this white hump. That's probably like a AC, uh, asphalt berm. And what they, in the old days, they put those up as a cheap alternative to provide protection for pedestrians. So usually there's like kids walking to school, okay? And then further out from the center line is the sidewalk, there's a, that's paved asphalt. And then further out, there's a grass strip right, right up against the property lines. So still, within the edge of the road right-of-way on both sides is what is the city-owned right-of-way. Yeah, and so that usually, see, a lot of people don't, they, they, they don't count the sidewalk area as the city road, but it is part of the city. Yeah, and so that usually, see, a lot of people don't, they, they, they don't count the sidewalk area as the city road, but it is part of the city road. And that's the main thing. Okay, next slide. So the question as far as what is allowed in that sidewalk area? Okay, so I'm going to go through quickly as I can the different kind of situations. This is an unimproved shoulder, grass shoulder, okay? So, uh, big rocks, actually any rocks bigger than one inch is considered a hazard and, 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 and obstruction. So if you see those boulders, you know, those are actually dangerous. See, the, within the road right-of-way, we are concerned, the, the city and the Department of, uh, Transportation Services and Facility Maintenance, they're concerned about vehicular safety for cars and also pedestrian safety for people that walk on the roadway. Okay, so boulders like this, they're, they're put there by the property owner, we assume, to prevent people from parking in front of their house, right? Uh, and the, the sidewalk area, whether it's a grass shoulder or if it's a sidewalk, those sidewalk areas are intended for pedestrians to use. But when people park their car, because there's a lack of parking in the area or they, uh, one house may own six cars, you know, nowadays with multi-generational families, they park on the street and they, sometimes they park on the sidewalk. So now pedestrians are forced to walk on the road. But that's why, for, uh, as far as the city, we, uh, we, we will cite you if you have these type of boulders on the roadway. Okay, next slide. So we consider them obstructions. Okay, now this is a rock edging along a, uh, uh, landscape strip that's up against the property line, but it is still within the city right-of-way. You see those rock, those rocks are like six-inch, one-foot rock, but they, they kind of nicely landscaped that. That edging is actually illegal and they, they will be cited. The picture on the right side is, uh, that same type of landscaping, but with a plastic vinyl edge strip. That is, is allowed as long as that plastic edge strip edging is flush with the grass. And as long as they maintain, uh, like a four-foot pathway for people to walk. Okay, so it's not like people want to beautify the front of their, their property, but it is a city right-of-way, um, asset that we need to provide pedestrians a safe place to walk, okay? So that's where a lot of times the residents get into trouble with us. Okay, next slide. Another, another thing that's also people put up is these, uh, oh, back up, uh, these, uh, signs, like they, they, the homeowners will invent their own no parking sign or skip off the grass sign. So they stick it in with rebar or steel T-posts and they attach it to, okay, these are still considered obstructions to us. And they are a hazard not only to cars, but to also pedestrians. Because some of them are like rebar and they're kind of, if you trip and fall, you know, uh, it's a, it's a hazard for pedestrians. Okay, but so these homemade signs are illegal. Okay, next slide. Uh, some people put up plants to beautify the front of their house, but it's in the city right-of-way. So, uh, thorny plants like cactus or bougainvillea or this palm tree on the right side, these, you know, I think maybe they're nice to look at or beautify their, the whole property from the street side, but it's illegal and they will be cited, okay? However, okay, next slide. Some plants are allowed, uh, but, okay, the other parts that plants are not is fruit trees, mainly because of, uh, the, they're going to drop their fruit and create, you know, rotting fruit and all this kind of problems. Uh, also, you know, plumaria trees? Because, uh, their branches are easily broken and they have the poisonous sap, you know, the milk, so we don't allow that. Um, okay, next slide, Spencer. But there are trees that are allowed in the, in the, uh, right-of-way on the sidewalk area, uh, but there's some conditions. Okay, so the trees that are allowed are coconut trees and the, the city and palm trees that are on the approved city tree list. Okay, so they have a very specific list on what is allowed in the road right-of-way. Now, and that list is on our website, DPP website. Okay, next, next slide. Now, hedges and other landscaping are also allowed, but with conditions, all right? So like hedges like mock orange, naupaka, dracina, plants or palms, hibiscus and tea leaves, all those types of plantings are on the approved city tree list. Um, you can plant them towards the outer edge of the road right-of-way, but as long as you can maintain this four-foot-wide passageway and also a safe, what's called sight distance. So you know, say you have a driveway, right? You pull out from your driveway and you kind of stop before you enter the road. You want to, from your driveway and you're looking for a safe entry point between traffic or cars that are passing. You want to be able to safely make that right or left turn, you need what's called sight distance. So you need to be able to see down the road safely to know when there's an opening. Okay, fine. Uh, next slide. What's also not allowed is you cannot pave the, uh, sidewalk, unimproved sidewalk area with concrete or asphalt in order to park your car. Okay, so you will be cited for that. You see the, the slide on the right is also, uh, not allowed and not because of the amount of, uh, the whole right-of-way is paved, but some people want to pave a parking, uh, pave a landing for their rubbish can or trash can. That is allowed, but only of like a four-foot square. Okay, next slide. Okay, this is the big one. This is what, uh, Mr. Nita brought up. Loose aggregate or gravel is allowed with conditions. You also need to get a special authorization from our DPP's office to have this gravel. You cannot just put it out there. Okay, the conditions are it can, the gravel has to be contained with edging, like the back of the curb or the side of the sidewalk, so there's a, there's, uh, like a edge to it that it won't escape. And it, it cannot be tossed onto the sidewalk or the road. So that kind of has to be maintained. Next slide. Okay, I'm kind of near the end. Gravel in the side, gravel in this, uh, sidewalk area is not allowed in place of a sidewalk. So the only, because a lot of people are feel very unsteady or unsafe walking on gravel. What is allowed primarily is concrete sidewalk and also grass. So next slide. Uh, uh, no, no, uh, oh, you can do asphalt, yes, yes. For, for as a walking path for the sidewalk for pedestrians. Okay, so this is the surface encroachment. If you want what's, what's called a variance or exception to, to do special plantings and or something different, you need to get an authorization from DPP. These are the types of things that we will and will not allow. It's on our website. Next, next slide. And then this is the, this is our website, honolulu.gov/DPP. You can find the surface encroachment application form if you want to do something special and also it has the official street tree list.
It, that was very good. A big round of applause for Jero. Terrific. Now I know what not to do.
Okay, Mr. Nita, I'll take your questions later if you want to.
Yeah, let me, let me do this before you may ask. I'm going to ask, um, Vern to come up and give his, he's, he's been waiting. And then you can ask the questions and, and by the way, if the lights go off, honest to the day objection, that means we are adjourned, okay? Vern, you want to come up?
Yeah, I ju, I just want to thank Neighborhood Board Number 14 for supporting the parade, participating in, in the parade and, um, you folks are a big part of the parade. I did want to again thank HPD District Five, um, Party Department Coa Keenie Station Number Four and United Church of Christ and Ferguson Plumbing. They allow us the stage and to end the parade, so. Thank you again and I hope to see you folks next year.
And thank you for a great, and it didn't rain. A big round of applause for Vern and his partner. Thank you. Thanks. Okay, now let's take the questions and if the lights go out, everybody go home.
Well, the one you showed me, that's called unimproved sidewalk. That's the one with the grass, right?
Yes.
Okay, the one I also have is when the city plants a tree in the so-called easement area. The city always trim the roadside. The property side is then trimmed. I talked to the owners already and they said, hey, we have all the leaves, now it's protruding on the other side of the property. My question is, who is responsible for cutting that portion that now is on the so-called property owner's side? Uh, I don't know, because the thing is that I have about three addresses and the trees are back on their side. And you know that pod you're telling me about, who cleans up that pod? Because that part is on the public side of the street, not on the private side. So I believe the city is supposed to be cleaning up that, that pod and that whatever you want to call it. Because it's not the owner's responsibility. He is, he is responsible for the easement, I agree. But now you get all these, you know, shower trees and, you know, they get these long pods and developed and it drops. Who is responsible for do the cleaning? And the other one is about the so-called concrete. On a private road, you can't have it, a private road now. A public road, you cannot. So you know, you got to make this thing clear because if you are on a public road, you can do anything what you want on the easement because the city only owns the road or has the right-of-way of the road only. On the easement side.
Go ahead.
Okay, the city owns, or usually, usually, generally speaking, the right-of-way between the edge of the private property line, which in many cases includes the sidewalk. So that's where, what we own and what we have legal responsibility for. And there's an ordinance that says the maintenance of that grass planting strip is a responsibility of the property owner that is fronting that strip, so.
On the, on the private road you're talking about, right?
Talking public roads.
No, 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 I'm talking, I was talking about private road.
If you have private roads, I recommend you, you come talk to me later because I think this presentation dealt with public roads. So it sounds like you have a personal situation or who you represent is. It's very different for private roads.
Chair.
Okay, let's, let's move on. Yeah. Carol?
Yes.
Yeah, if, if, if you know of a place that it has a violation of that, especially the putting the rocks out and things like that, what do you do? Do you call DPP? Who do you call?
Yes, you call DPP and we will send out an investigator, uh, and we will, if there's a violation, we will issue a violation.
Okay, thank you.
Very good. Unless there are any real pressing questions, you know, uh, Jero will be back here in February to follow up with, I thank you very much.
Chair, I might log in online.
Yeah, but that's fine, that's fine. You did a great job in the present. Another big round of applause for Jero for a nice presentation. Now, now I got to go home and get rid of my rocks in front of my, yeah, no, but thank you very much. That was very comprehensive. Um, let's see, I believe we have only, we pretty much covered everything under unfinished business and under new business. Uh, except for Bill 57 and 58, I believe, Cara, you have any to add on that? I think it's pretty much, Cara?
I didn't address, uh, on the.
Nothing, nothing to add. I think, um, somebody is here from, uh, Councilman Dos Santos Tam's office, maybe they can report.
Is there somebody from?
Yeah, there we go, yeah.
There we go. Why don't you go ahead and give your report and hopefully you can make it before the lights go off.
Okay.
Thank you for coming. Go ahead.
Sorry about that, that I jumped on late. Uh, my name is Lisa Leonardo and yes, I am from Councilmember Tyler Dos Santos, uh, Tam's office. Um, so just a couple of things to report on. I hope that you received our newsletter. If not, please reach out to our office and we can send it out to you. There's a couple of good things in there. Before I talk about the newsletter, I just, I did want to talk about a request to trim overgrown bamboo around Napua Park, Napuayo Park at the top of Aleva Heights. So we got a request for that and, uh, this issue was investigated on November 13th, 2023 by the Parks Department, which confirmed that the overgrowth vegetation, dried bamboos and hawali po trees along the property, the, along the property fence line. So the Division of Urban Forestry received a work request to remove the wild growth within 10 feet of the private property fence line. Uh, and on December 20th, 2023, Parks has scheduled the work to be completed by the end of February 2024. Um, uh, and now I will jump over to just a couple of things that I wanted to point out on our newsletter. Um, this was a newsletter that came out, it is, uh, titled December 2023. Um, one of the things I wanted to point out was a town hall discussion held on the package of illegal game room proposals. We did have, um, a bunch of neighborhood boards that joined us on that. Um, check that out. Uh, there also is a reminder about applicable illegal short-term rental laws. Um, we're just kind of pointing it out to our different neighborhood boards, um, if they could, uh, encourage DPP to crack down on short-term rental violators in their neighborhoods. Uh, one example for Lilih is Allee Street and Judge Street. Um, uh, and that, actually that completes my report. And, um, if you would like, I'll be putting our contact numbers in our office for anything that you guys need to reach out to us for.
We have, we have your contact numbers, but thank you.
Okay.
Any, I'm, I'm right rushing because we got like one minute left till the lights go out. Any questions from the board, from the public? If not, thank you very much. I thank the council member. I saw him at one of the events. Thank you. Okay, let's move on real quick. Um, Malahia? St. Francis, Lana Kila, anything quick?
I got it. Uh, you folks have the handout?
Yes, yes.
So it's full of stuff, just, um, today was start the winter session, they're closed on, on next Monday, but they'll start their, um, uh, well, new member orientation on the 24th. Okay, done.
Great, thank you very much. Thanks, Carol. Uh, any other nonprofit organizations? None? Uh, any announcements? Next, uh, board meeting is going to be in February, when does it?
I have a question.
30, same place?
I have a question.
Yes.
Carol?
Carol.
Handout.
Yes.
Do we give it back to Lana Killer or do you want me to dump it?
Uh, give it to the neighborhood board.
Yeah, the, um, we have, you know, a lot of extras, so. Do you want me to give it back to Lana Killer? I can drop it off out there.
Yeah, because then they can give.
All right, I got it.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions, announcements?
Thank you.
We made it. Uh, unless there are any other business, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Move by, uh, Mr. Contral, is there a second? Second, oh, second by Mr. White. Um, all those in favor, raise your right hand. Those oppose? Seeing none, no objections? Thank you, everybody. We made it. Meeting is adjourned and thank you for all, everybody for coming.